Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of Allegheny County Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Jared, please be seated. Or Jared, please take a roll. Please be seated.
I followed. Ms. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Bedkowski.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi.
Here.
Mr. Foulis.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Nagaretti-Chapkus.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritsia.
Here.
Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katena.
Here.
We have 14 members present.
Thank you. We'll now have proclamations and certificates. Before we begin, though, we have a lot of presentations tonight. So what I'm going to ask is, rather than us do pictures after each one, as one of my colleagues suggested prior, we're going to do pictures at the very end. So we'll call you up by group at the very end, and we'll do pictures that way because it's a little bit at the end of all of the proclamations, just to make it a little bit more simple or more time efficient for us. So go ahead, Jared. 1-2-6-5-0-2-3.
Certificates of achievement presented to the Chartres Valley High School Unified Bocce Team for being named 2023 Southwest Division Champions, sponsored by Council Member Paul Messina.
Coach Ball.
Is that Coach?
Coach Ball.
Coach Ball.
Bocce Team? Thank you very much. Coach Courtney, can I have you up here, please, with your whole your team? Bring them all up, please.
My son plays. They beat us. They beat us, too.
He can stand right here if he wants, wherever you want to stand, wherever you guys want to stand. Joe, come on up, Joe. First and foremost, congratulations on a wonderful season. I want to congratulate Coach Courtney, Penn State grad. I'm a pick guy, but we'll be okay with that. It is what it is. This certificate of achievement recognizes the outstanding athletic ability and sportsmanship of Chartres Valley Unified Bocce Team, which was demonstrated by becoming the 2023 Southwest Division Champions. Chartres Valley Unified Bocce Team continued a stellar inaugural season by finishing second in the Three Rivers Region Championship and earning a March 22nd-23rd trip to Hershey for a chance at a state title, then went on to earn seventh runner-up out of 250 teams in the state finals after a valiant effort. Wonderful, wonderful season. Congratulations to Kenzo Astor, Ian Patista, Kolby Dinko, Cole Jankowski, Marka Orbavich, who I know his father very well, John Sutherland, Andrew White, and Amanda Wyatt. And at this time, I'd like to ask Coach Courtney, congratulate her, and please say a few words. And any of the children want to say a few words, you're welcome to say it.
Yeah, for sure.
Come on up.
All right. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. This was the first year that Chartres Valley was able to have a Special Olympics Unified Bocce Team, so we are so grateful to have made it as far as we did, and I couldn't be more proud of you guys. And we did it. We made it. We made it all the way. And yes, thank you so much.
Joe, would you like to say any words?
Great, yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to speak on behalf of the parents. First, I wanted to thank Mr. Paul Messina for bringing us out today. Thank you, County Council, for bringing our children down, and thank you to Special Olympics for putting this on. Having a child with autism is something that was hard to accept, and because of Unified Sports and because of Special Olympics, it made it easier. It made it easy on these children to be accepted, to be included. And we're speaking to the retired police chief, Scott Schuber, just recently, and Officer Schuber had said to me before and reminded me again, Joe, when I got involved with Special Olympics, I thought I was going there to help them. What I realized is I was going there for them to help me. That's what Special Olympics has done for me. And Courtney, thank you for making this all possible. Thank you.
Pictures afterwards? Can you stay?
Oh, yeah.
Please sit down. We'll get pictures afterwards, okay? Thank you very much.
Congratulations, guys. I had the pleasure of seeing you at a few different tournaments. You beat Moon, though, so I had to deal with my son, so he wasn't happy about that, but congratulations.
Okay, thank you very much. April now is National Donate Life Month, a time for all Americans to celebrate the generosity of those who have saved lives by becoming organ, eye, tissue, blood donors, and encourage more Americans to follow their examples. It is now my distinct pleasure to introduce Langston Moses, who made the selfless and honorable decision to become a living donor with his father, Darnell. With more than 11,000 Americans on the waiting list for liver transplant and only 5,000 deceased donors' livers available for transplant, living liver donation offers many benefits. During a living donor-living transplant, a living person has a piece of their healthy liver removed and transplanted into another person's to replace an unhealthy liver. These transplants are possible because of the liver's unique ability to regenerate or regrow. Darnell was diagnosed with liver cancer in the fall of 2022 and after a 15-year-old fight with non-alcoholic fatty acid liver disease. In February 2023, Darnell was placed on the transplant list, and Langston volunteered immediately to get tested to see if he was a match. By the end of February, it was determined to be a match. The surgery date was scheduled rapidly due to Darnell's declining health. Langston never thought twice before entering the operation room, and his last words were, "Let's go." Now, I'd like to invite Langston, Darnell, to share more of their touching story. Please come on up.
I just want to say thank you, guys, for having me here. It's such an honor to help my dad, just to make him healthy. And, you know, one thing that I'll say is that if you have an opportunity to be a live living donor, it's 100% worth it, you know? Saving someone's life, it's just an amazing feeling, and I'm just happy that I could do it for my dad.
Yeah, just briefly, I can never repay what Langston did for me. You know, as a parent, I actually struggled with the decision whether or not I wanted either one of my sons to possibly be considered for a living donor, because as a parent, my first instinct is that we protect our kids, not that they protect us. So, but after talks with my wife Kimberly and our family, we said this was probably the best route. So Langston, just being the unbelievable young man that he is, graciously donated part of his liver so that he could save my life, and I'll be forever grateful. So I just want to thank Councilmember Paul Messina, President Katena, and other members of the council for recognizing Langston for the unbelievable selfish act that he did. So thank you very much.
A proclamation proclaiming April 23rd through 29th, 2023, is National Library Week in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember DiMarco.
Folks, it's that time of the year again. It's April here, okay? I can't tell you how pleased I am to be joined tonight by Kimberly Havridin.
Amy Anderson.
Or Amy Anderson from Aqualot, Allegheny County Library Association, and Andrew Medlar, the director, the CEO of Carnegie Libraries of Pittsburgh. Folks, for all people like myself who were born and raised back before we had computers, okay, you know, our parents tried to teach us to read. We went to school, they taught us to read, but it was the library that we went to that really was the window into the world. I mean, it was the opportunity to read books, you know, whether it be fiction or if it was nonfiction, we're reading about, you know, biographies and people and history. If it was fiction, we're, excuse me, if it was fiction, we're reading about things like The Black Stallion, you know, where as a child, you're imagining, what's the one in Call of the Wild, you know, where your imagination can run loose, and where as a child, you can really begin to dream, okay? So I can't tell you how proud I am today to recognize April, here my proclamation, I'll have to look at it, April 23rd, April 23rd through the 29th, it's National Library Week. So whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and campuses, libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve to ensure equal access to all. And whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, like when I was a kid, okay, libraries are accessible and inclusive places where everyone is welcome to use their resources to help foster a sense of belonging and community. And whereas for people that are lacking broadband at home, libraries provide access to computers and Wi-Fi, even checking out Internet hotspots and laptops. And whereas while we recognize librarians as information professionals who provide expertise, services, and guidance for patrons to access credible sources of material, making their own informed decisions about the world today. And whereas in times of crisis, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities both in person and virtually. And whereas to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas America is celebrating National Library Week, including April 25th as National Library Workers Day, and the immeasurable contributions made by library workers, April 26th as National Library Outreach Day, and our Allegheny County Bookmobiles who regularly demonstrate that library services are not just limited to their physical location, and April 27th as Take Action for Libraries Day, which is encouraging community support for our libraries. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilmember Sam DiMarco, proclaim National Library Week, April 23rd through the 29th, 2023. There's more to the story. During this week, we encourage all residents to visit our libraries and explore all that they have to offer to help move Pennsylvania and our students forward. A witness whereof, I have hereto informed, cause the seal of the county of Allegheny County to be affixed this 18th day of April, 2023.
Amy and Andrew. Thank you so much. Please stick a rod, we'll get pictures after they, as a group, okay?
Thank you.
A proclamation recognizing Astrobotic Technology and their dedication to delivering scientific instruments, technologies, ideas, and innovations to space, sponsored by Councilmembers Bennett and Pritsio.
Waiting for Councilmember Pritsio, and I'm assuming you're Bas Karan?
Sure.
Bas Karan, thank you. I was like, I know, I'm not going to say this right. But here's Councilmember Pritsio. So Councilmember Pritsio and I got to visit Astrobotic in March, was it March? Okay, time flies. And so we got to see the rover and all the, I think there's a rover? Is it a rover? Okay, all right. See, I don't even know the terminology, but in any case, I was nerding out on it. So, you know, we felt like we were in Hidden Figures, like in real life, so it was really, really fun, and thank y'all for having us, because we really had a good time. So we're going to present a proclamation to Astrobotic for all their wonderful work. We talked about things relating the space litter to the Mexican consulate having the first time sending anything in the space with the, what's it called again?
Rover demonstration.
Rover, yes, that. So whereas Astrobotic Technology is a privately-held company that specializes in making space missions feasible and more affordable for science, exploration, and commerce. As a lunar logistics company, Astrobotic provides end-to-end delivery services for payloads to the moon. And whereas since its founding in 2007 by a Carnegie Mellon University professor and his associates, Astrobotic has grown to a team of 150 with more than 700 years of combined experience in the space industry. This team consists of four departments: lunar landers, oh, that's what that was, okay. See, if I read it, I would've known, right? Planetary mobility, space tech, and business development. And whereas Astrobotic's 47,000-square-foot complex is the largest private facility in the world dedicated to lunar logistics, and Astrobotic uses this facility to build and operate its lines of landers, rovers, autonomous spacecraft navigation systems, and other space technologies. And whereas the mission of Astrobotic began in 2007 with the development of a lunar lander initially called Red Rover, shortly after the construction of the first prototype, the mission was renamed Griffin. Griffin is a medium-class lander, and the aluminum frame is equipped with flexible mounting options that allow it to carry a range of rovers and other payloads to the lunar surface or to orbit around the moon. Whereas ensuring these payloads make it to the moon safely, the 14.8-feet-wide and 6.6-feet-tall Griffin also features an autonomous sensor system. The optical precision autonomous landing, also known as Opal, sensor allows Griffin to make a precise landing even on the rugged and hazardous lunar terrain. Once on the surface, the lander features a range of ramps that can be equipped to allow rovers to safely disembark from their ride. And whereas Griffin has a payload capacity of around 1,102 pounds with a trip to the lunar surface costing 1.2 million per 2.2 pounds, do that math, while carrying a payload to orbit costs 300,000 for 2.2 pounds. And whereas in addition to Griffin, Astrobotic has another smaller lunar landing that will be able to send technology to the surface of the moon. The company's small-scale Griffin lander redesign is called Peregrine, and is targeted to become both the first commercial mission to the moon and the first U.S. mission to make it to the lunar surface since Apollo 17 in 1972. And whereas measuring around 8.2 feet by 6.2 feet, Peregrine can hold cargo above and below its decks, which can be reconfigured depending on the cargo. Despite its smaller statue, this rover is also capable of hauling other rovers to the moon, which can roll out from the underside of its deck after touchdown. And whereas both landers use what Astrobotic Technology calls next-generation space engine technology, with the larger Griffin using seven main engines to perform its major maneuvers, while Peregrine has five. These engines guide the landers through the landing process of translunar injection, trajectory correction, lunar orbit insertion, and then powered descent. Following this, four clusters of attitude-controlled thrusters, or each lander, maintain their orientation for the final approach to the lunar surface. A steady touchdown regardless of surface conditions is then ensured by Peregrine and Griffin's four shock-absorbing legs. And whereas on March 14th, Astrobotic's Peregrine spacecraft, which is Pennsylvania's first-ever departed to Astrobotic's rocket provider, United Launch Alliance, in Cape Canaveral, Florida, the Peregrine lander is expected to carry with it around 11 NASA payloads on its trip to the moon in 2023. And now therefore, be it resolved that we, Allegheny County Councilmembers Liv Bennett and Anita Pritsio, do hereby recognize Astrobotic Technology for their dedication to making space missions feasible and more affordable for science, exploration, and commerce. And further, we commend them for the successful completion of Peregrine Lunar Lander's Flight Acceptance Campaign and the deportation to Cape Canaveral, Florida. And witness thereof, I hereby, to cause the seal of the county of Allegheny, to be affixed this 18th day of April, 2023. So lastly, I will say, if you have not had the opportunity to go, and I'm going to brag because it's in my district, yes, if you have not had the opportunity to go to Astrobotic's or the Mew Museum, I highly recommend it. It is so much fun. It is not huge, it's not like not huge that you'll be walking around all day, but if you're a nerd like me, you will definitely enjoy it. So thank you so much for bringing this to us and all your work.
Thank you, everybody, and it's quite an honor to be here. A couple of updates. So I'm, my name is Sharad Bas Karan. I'm the Peregrine Mission One Mission Director. I've been the Mission Director for seven years, running it since it was really a paper concept. We are still here. Our spacecraft is still in our high bay in the north side, and it's available from the museum, the Moonshot Museum. We were supposed to launch earlier this year, but our ride into space, United Launch Alliance's Vulcan rocket, is still going through some final testing, and so we are expected to launch in a few months, and this will be an historic mission. You heard a lot about it. We are here to deliver science and technology to the surface of the moon, to enable countries and private institutions and individuals to do science and technology on the moon. Our larger goal is to expand the solar system to human exploration. It's a lofty goal, but we think we can achieve it. Peregrine Mission One is getting ready to launch. The fully assembled spacecraft is right there in the high bay. You can see it from about 10 feet away through the glass, and you can take pictures. I'd encourage you to go see it. And this is historic on many fronts. As she mentioned, we are, the last time America went to the moon was 1972. Since then, the Chinese have been to the moon, but America has not, so we are trying to become, we're trying to return America to the moon for the first time in almost over 50 years. Also, most important, more importantly, is we are also a private company. We have done the entire development and testing and everything using our own people. We did not, we did not have NASA assistance. We're sending their payloads to the surface, but they did not provide any technical assistance. This is truly a commercial mission, which means that no commercial mission has ever landed on a planetary body, not even the moon. So we would become the first company to do this in history, here from Pittsburgh, and so we would like to, you know, make Pittsburgh a spacefaring city. So thank you, everybody. Please, we have Facebook sites, we're on LinkedIn, so please follow us as we continue toward our historic mission. Thank you.
Thank you. And then rope calls them, come back for pictures, right?
Just one more proclamation. 1-2-6-5-4-2-3.
A proclamation declaring April 9th through 15th, 2023, is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember Hallam.
I'd like to be on that, add this to that proclamation. She would, if she wasn't, she wouldn't let it go. Okay, so I'm really excited about this one. Today, we are declaring the week of April 9th through 15th, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And for anyone who's unaware, our 911 dispatchers work really long hours and a lot of mandatory overtime with shift work that often is changing all the time, and they truly are our first responders. Before any of our other first responders are able to get there, they're the ones that take the call. So I think this proclamation is really important, and I'm excited that Michael and Michelle are here for us to honor them today. A proclamation declaring National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Whereas when emergencies occur, the prompt response of firefighters, paramedics, and other first responders is crucial to those placed in danger. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with these emergency services. And whereas because of their dedicated service, the dispatchers of the Service Employees International Union, SEIU, have contributed substantially to the apprehension of folks, the suppression of fires, the treatment of patients, and the overall safety of our community. And whereas the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials will celebrate April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, to honor the thousands of men and women who respond to emergency calls, dispatch emergency professionals and equipment, and render lifesaving assistance to those across the United States. And whereas locally, we recognize the members of the SEIU who provide invaluable services to the citizens of our country. Now, therefore, be it resolved, Allegheny County Councilmember, me, do hereby declare April 9th through 15th, 2023, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Allegheny County, and we thank the telecommunications officers of the Service Employees International Union, SEIU. Your diligence and professionalism protects the citizens of our county, and we owe you a debt of gratitude for your services. So thank you both so much for being here, and Michael, if you'd say a few words.
She's had a few.
I'll let Michelle hold this. Hello, council. Nice to see some familiar faces. I did prepare a little speech. As she said, I'm Michael Steimeler, the member of SEIU, shop chief steward for Local 668 at the 911 Center. Been a dispatcher a week from today, will be 12 years. I'd like to thank you guys for honoring us and our membership for the work that they do each day. National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week is the opportunity to talk about the importance of our 911 system. Here at Allegheny County, we've struggled with staffing for nearly a decade, and after the last contract, we saw an exodus of our senior workers. Today, one in three 911 dispatchers have less than one year of experience, and 60% have less than five years of experience. There's legislation that is pending in Harrisburg in the form of House Bill 349, which I believe you all received a copy of, and is sponsored by Representatives Stan Miller and Jessica Benham. This will classify our members as first responders and will protect the health and safety of 911 dispatchers and workers. It will help towards the retention and the training. And one in three of 911 dispatchers suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder, yet currently Pennsylvania does not pay for mental health services or compensate workers who suffer from PTSD and other work-related trauma. We need to continue to recruit, train, retain, and we've wasted millions of dollars training workers and then losing them because the system just uses them and spits them back out. I ask that you please support this bill, encourage you, encourage our leaders in Harrisburg to do the same. I'd also like to invite each and every one of you the opportunity to come to the center and shadow a dispatcher or a call taker for a few hours, sit with us, and see what we do on a daily basis. We truly do a lot of amazing things that you had touched on. Also, I'd like to invite you to the Workers Memorial on April 28th at Market Square. That will start at noon, and we'll be honoring two police officers as well as dozens of other workers who have lost their lives over the last past year. So thank you again, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
A proclamation declaring April 28th, 2023, to be Workers Memorial Day in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember Walton.
My man. Again, always. April is... April is a significant month in a host of ways. This past Saturday was the birthday of a gentleman that we consider to be the father of the modern civil rights movement, Asa Philip Randolph. And one of the things that Mr. Randolph promoted and was a solid advocate for was worker rights and worker justice. And so it really leads itself, lends itself to this proclamation for Workers Memorial Joe will talk about it, but this whole movement about Workers Memorial Day is about providing safer workplaces and a cleaner and safer environment for workers. And that can't be understated or overstated because it's so important to the health and to the economy of our, of our country. Whereas in 1989, AFL-CIO declared April 28th as Workers Memorial Day to honor the hundreds and thousands of working people killed and injured on the job every day, every year. April 28th was chosen to commemorate the anniversary when the Occupational Safety and Health Act went into effect. And whereas on Workers Memorial Day, we remember those who've died in workplace catastrophes, suffered diseases because of exposure to toxic substances, or been injured because of dangerous conditions. And we rededicate ourselves to the fight for safe workplaces. And whereas workplace injuries, injuries affect workers physically, but they can also have lasting financial and emotional effects on workers and their families. Whereas everywhere, every year on Workers Memorial Day, unions, communities, and work sites in nearly 100 countries recognize workers who have been killed or injured on the job. And whereas the theme of this year's Workers Memorial Day is Organize Safe Jobs Now. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilman DeWitt Walton, along with all members of council, do hereby declare Friday, April 28th to be Workers Memorial Day in Allegheny County. And we recognize and honor all workers killed, injured, and disabled on the job, thank them for their service, and offer sympathy to their families and loved ones. And witness thereof, I heron two cause the seal of the county of Allegheny to be affixed to this 28th day of April 2023. And, and we're going to bring the committee here to speak and talk about the importance of what the work, what they do.
Thank you, DeWitt. Thank you, council. My name is Joe Delaley. Along with me are part of the committee here Dallas Greco and also to Ron Bieckel. And again, this will be our 21st year of putting on Workers Memorial Day. It was actually, it started, I believe, in 2003 after the death of one of the ironworkers down at the convention center, Paul Corsi Jr. From that point on, we've been doing this consistently in Market Square, again to honor the men and women who have died on the job, but also too to promote worker safety, to tell people that our jobs are not as safe as we think they are. Basically, workers want to go to work in the morning, they want to provide for their families, and to come home to their wife and children that very evening. You know, I can go back and also to, you know, a worker's death or, I mean, worker's death doesn't only affect that person, but it affects the whole family and the community. On average, 15 workers die each and every day, okay? Also too, if you take in consideration the occupational diseases that some workplaces produce, we're talking about now 120,000 workers a year. That's some big staggering numbers, okay? I'll give you a little story about myself, which I relate to all the time. My grandfather in 1936 was a steelworker, okay? And he died of silicosis and left my grandmother with five girls and one boy to raise, okay? I never knew my grandfather because he died young, okay? But again, left me without a grandfather, but also left my, my grandmother without a husband and left his children without a father, okay? And what I say is, one century later, silicosis is still a killer in the workplace. So, this is why we put on Workers Memorial Day each and every year at Market Square, again, to educate the community, to be safe, and to alert everybody that, hey, we want our workers to come home at the end of the day. So with that, I'll give you your second invite to Barker Square on April 28th. Come on down and witness the, the honoring of our men and women who have died on a job. Thank you very much for this proclamation. We really do appreciate it. Thank you. Why don't you have them come up?
We'll start with them since they're already up, and then we'll go back through the order.
I didn't even get to the meeting, the tables of the meeting.
Can you be seen? Are you seeing me now?
Everybody right on me. Okay, three, two, one.
Thank you.
Unified botchy team, come on up.
If you want to go down, you can.
Congratulations, everybody.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, thank you.
Congrats.
Okay, that's awesome.
I gotta get a irrigate.
Okay, right on me. Ready, ready. One, two, three. Let me do one more. Ready, one, two, three.
I'll just meet with them and congratulations.
Okay. Everybody, okay, right here on me. Ready, one, two, three. Gotcha.
So you gave me some basic work.
All right, thank you. It should be what?
Yeah, that's what I mean. If you do him online, it sucks.
I know, I know. Fix that board of elections. All right, ready, buddy? Everybody right on me. Ready, one, two, three. Okay, gotcha.
Thank you. Astrobotica, Arbottica, sorry.
Ready, one, two, three. Gotcha.
Telecommunications.
This was a brilliant idea.
Tom gets credit. Congratulations, Scott.
I said this is the best thing. This is my legacy.
All right, ready, ready. One, two, three. Gotcha.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you very much.
That's Mike. Thank you.
It was like 20 years ago, something didn't happen.
And the remaining proclamations and certificates will be read into the record. 1-2-6-5-5-2-3.
A proclamation recognizing April 2023 as Fair Housing Month in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember Walton.
1-2-6-5-7-2-3.
A proclamation recognizing 2023 President's Volunteer Service Award recipient Patricia O'Kelly, sponsored by Councilmember DeMarco.
1-2-6-5-8-2-3.
A proclamation recognizing 2023 President's Volunteer Service Award recipient Linda R. Wertham, sponsored by Councilmember DeMarco.
1-2-6-5-9-2-3.
A proclamation recognizing President's Volunteer Service Award recipient Mary Ann Ramer, sponsored by Councilmember DeMarco.
1-2-6-6-0-2-3.
A proclamation recognizing Brody Brazil for the completion of his Eagle Scout project, sponsored by Councilmembers Macy and Paul Mary.
1-2-6-6-1-2-3.
Certificates of recognition to Boy Scout Troop 4 recipients in obtaining the Eagle Scout rank, sponsored by Councilmember Macy.
Public comment on agenda items.
We have one on agenda items, Erica Bruce Lars.
Not here.
Not here.
Presentation of appointments. 1-2-6-4-9-2-3.
Approving the appointment of Phyllis J. Anderson to the Allegheny County Conservation District Board for term to expire on December 31st, 2026, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
That will go to Appointment Review for, I missed approval of minutes, Jared, so are there any minutes to approve? Okay. Unfinished business. Committee on Appointment Review for the Second Reading. 1-2-6-1-4-2-3.
Approving the appointment of James Kuhn to the Friends of the Park for Boys Park for term to expire on March 30th, 30th, 2026, sponsored by Councilmember Nakarati Chapkus.
Councilmember Bennett.
Thank you. And in lieu of Councilmember Nakarati Chapkus' absence, I will fill in. And we met on April 12th and affirmatively, affirmatively recommended this candidate to the full council. And I make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Are we getting any roll? This is 26 to date.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Oh, no, I'm not voting no.
You're not voting no on this one? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Approving the appointment of Kelly Ware Esquire to the Human Relations Commission of Allegheny County for term to expire on December 31st, 2026, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Thank you. One, Councilwoman Bennett.
Again, we thank you, Chair. Again, we met on April 12th and affirmatively, affirmatively recommended this candidate to the full council. I now make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none.
I have discussion. Yeah, I just want to say for the record, I'm going to be voting against this in the next two appointments because I do not believe in the current county executive binding the hands of the next county executive for this many years after his terms up. So, just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Jared, roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco.
Yes.
Mr. Dewar.
Yes.
Ms. Filiaji.
Yes.
Mr. Fettulus.
Yeah.
Ms. Hallam.
No.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Ice 13 knows one with one member not present. The appointment passes.
1-2-6-1-7-2-3.
Approving the appointment of Alan Shepard to the Community College of Allegheny County Board of Trustees for term to expire on April 23rd, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilmember Bennett.
Yes, thank you, Chair. We met on April 12th, 2023, and affirmatively recommended this candidate to the full council, and I make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jared, please take rule.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco.
Yes.
Mr. Dewar.
Yes.
Ms. Filiaji.
Yes.
Mr. Fettulus.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
No.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Ice 13 knows one with one member not present. The appointment passes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, 1-2-6-1-8-2-3.
Approving the appointment of Timothy Chesley to the Community College of Allegheny County Board of Trustees for term to expire on December 31st, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Now, Councilmember Bennett.
Thank you, Chair. We again met on April 12th, 2023, and affirmatively recommended this candidate to the full council, and I make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jared, please take rule.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco.
Yes.
Mr. Dewar.
Yes.
Ms. Filiaji.
Yes.
Mr. Fettulus.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Hallam.
No.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Ice 13 knows one with one member not present. The appointment passes.
Are there any liaison reports this evening?
President Katina. Yeah, I have two. If I may. First off, very quick board of elections update. I'm sure folks have seen the Commonwealth Court cases that were holding up. The mail-in ballots being sent out have been resolved, and the mail-in ballot should be scheduled to start hitting mailboxes starting on Friday. So folks can begin to look for them in the mailbox Friday, Saturday, or the next Monday or Tuesday. Additions to that, in my role as the county council member on the ALON board, I wanted to thank the members who took time to attend the Allegheny League of Municipalities Conference this past weekend in Severn Springs. We had a number of members attend the county council panel, which I talked to Jason. He said that we had over 150 people attend in a room that was about 10,000 degrees. So they actually stuck around to hear what we had to say through what was essentially Hades. And so I was joined by Councilwoman Hallam, Councilmember Bekowski, Councilwoman Pritzio, Council, Councilmember Fettulus, I think that was us, I think it was everyone on the panel. And then I also saw Councilmember Macy who came after the, up there after the event had ended, but I know he attended as well. So, wanted to thank everyone for coming. If anyone has any suggestions to make the event better for those who attended in the future, please let me know. Be happy to pass the, pass the suggestions off at the next ALON board meeting. Thank you.
I think I'm leaving now.
Thank you. Was there someone from this side? Councilman Paul Mary?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I just wanted to announce that we're going to have CCAC graduation on Thursday, May 17th, at Accra Shore Stadium, and you're all welcome to come. And it's quite an evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now have new businesses and, or new business ordinances, resolutions. 1-2-6-6-2-2-3.
An ordinance to the county of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending and supplementing the Allegheny County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 220, entitled Campaign Finance Regulations, through the creation of new sections 220-7 through 220-9, in order to regulate certain forms of expenditures coordinated between candidates and/or candidate committees and other entities, sponsored by Councilmember Dewar.
That will go to government reform. New business motions, 1-2-6-6-3-2-3.
Motion of the council of Allegheny County, amending and supplementing the rules of council, Article 2, Rule F2, in order to establish a mechanism for facilitating timely review and discussion of bills referred to any committee of council in accordance with applicable statutory requirements, sponsored by councilmembers Dewar and Filiaji.
That will go to the executive committee. 1-2-6-6-4-2-3.
Motion of the council of Allegheny County, amending and supplementing the rules of council, Article 1, Rule C2V, in order to establish requirement that all minority parties having an elected member of council be represented on council's committees, sponsored by councilmembers Dewar and Filiaji.
That will go to the executive committee as well. Notification of contracts, 1-2-6-6-5-2-3.
Communication summarizing approved executive actions for the month of March 2023.
Is there a motion to receive?
Motion, oh, second.
Motion has been received and finally has been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. We'll now have public comment on general items.
We had three individuals sign up timely and apparently one who signed up untimely. First up is Craig Campbell.
Greetings, Mr. President, members of council. I'm the president of the Allegheny County Chiefs of Police Association, and I represent the over 100 municipal police departments in Allegheny County. I'm requesting a meeting with you and your staff to discuss the current and future plans for detaining juvenile offenders in Allegheny County. Juvenile Detention Center has been closed for over a year and a half. The lack of a secure facility capable of housing violent juvenile offenders has jeopardized public safety and hindered the rehabilitative function of the juvenile courts. While a permanent solution needs to be found for the long term, a temporary solution must be implemented immediately to provide for the safe housing of violent juvenile offenders in Allegheny County. Currently, violent juvenile offenders are routinely being released to family and friends only to reoffend sometimes within hours. Some examples include an 18-year-old, while still on juvenile electronic monitoring, removed his device and shot six people outside of a church. An 18-year-old, while still wearing his electronic monitoring device from the juvenile courts, murdered someone in downtown Pittsburgh. A 14-year-old, who led police on a dangerous pursuit in a stolen car, was arrested with two stolen handguns and released due to no facility to house him. He was rearrested with an assault rifle and assaulted the arresting officers and finally housed in a facility in West Moreland County. A 16-year-old, while on electronic monitoring, was suspected of providing stolen cars using numerous shootings, was arrested in a stolen car with an assault rifle and 150 stamped bags of heroin. He was released to his mother against her wishes, only to be rearrested again with stolen firearms. A 16-year-old was charged with robbery with a firearm and pistol whipping the victim. He already had outstanding warrants and was released due to no suitable facility to house him. Finally, a juvenile was arrested with a stolen pistol. He was bandaged from injuries he sustained in an earlier shooting and was released to a guardian due to a lack of a suitable facility to house him. I could go on and on. Those are just some highlights. In rare instances that a juvenile offender is placed in a detention facility, they are housed outside of Allegheny County and frequently out of state, causing a hardship for the arresting officers, who must drive over three hours to house an offender, but also for the Allegheny County Sheriff's Office, who is tasked with transporting these juveniles to court appearances, often taking days instead of hours. In addition, the Sheriff's Office was forced to reallocate two full-time deputies just for the lengthy juvenile transports. Two options come to mind for a temporary facility capable of housing violent juvenile offenders. First, Schuman Center could be reopened on a temporary basis to house violent juvenile offenders. Second, the Allegheny County Jail is capable of housing juveniles as those charged as adults are currently housed there. A pod could be utilized to segregate and house violent offenders charged as juveniles, just like those charged as adults.
If you could wrap it up.
I can. You recently passed a motion that created a joint juvenile justice study group. The copy I have has no members of law enforcement. I understand that might have been revised. If not, I urge you to give law enforcement a voice in that, and our association would like to offer any assistance we can to help find a solution to this problem, and I'm willing to talk with anybody that wants to contact me. If I may, I don't know who to give them to. I have a copy of a letter for Mr. Katina and a copy for Mr. Fitzgerald. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Rachel Radke.
Okay. Sorry, I get nervous. My name is Rachel Radke. I am a citizen of Council District 11. I'm here this evening to ask questions and raise some concerns regarding the management and distribution of funding from Pennsylvania's opioid settlement funds. It's been very difficult to find any up-to-date and reliable information from the county or the press on this matter. I'm hoping that my time here can start to carve out a path to increase transparency on this issue as these funds continue to arrive. As someone in long-term recovery from opioid use disorder, I'm just one of thousands of residents of this county who are the intended beneficiaries of this money. Over the next 15 years, by December 2038, the county will receive at least $82 million. According to the publicly available county dashboard, Allegheny County has so far received $8.4 million from the opioid settlement fund, with another $4.9 million scheduled to arrive in December. The site shows that the funds have been budgeted among six categories: research, harm reduction, preventing opioid misuse... It's not really polite to say anymore, but that's okay. Connection to care, recovery support, and the treatment of OUD. However, the dashboard currently reflects that $0 of the settlement funds have been spent. I can only find one press release from the county, appearing to be from the fall of 2022, although it isn't dated, and it describes how some of the 2022 disbursement is being spent. It's an incomplete summary. It's confusing, and it has not much useful detail. So I'm requesting that the council address the following questions. Is there a specific board or committee in place in Allegheny County which oversees disbursement of these funds? Who are they? Are the meetings open to the public? I've never found an announcement of such a meeting, which I would expect would be required by the Sunshine Act. Number two, what is the RFP process by which organizations in Allegheny County may submit proposals to access these funds? How was the funds that are already assigned to organizations, how was that decision made? Transparency is so crucial regarding the management of the opioid settlement funds. Citizens of Allegheny County have been and continue to be completely ravaged by this epidemic. This settlement fund, if managed appropriately, can completely change the future of this region. Myself and so many others are very eager to get to work. Thank you.
Next up is Lori Moran.
Good evening. Thank you so much for letting us speak tonight. My name is Lori Moran. I'm the president of the East Liberty Chamber of Commerce. Chambers was founded in 1929 and represents over 150 businesses in and around East Liberty. I'm here today on behalf of those businesses in East Liberty and all over the city and the county, which are facing increasing challenges that are tied directly to the closing of the Schuman Detention Center. The chamber held a meeting for stakeholders, retailers, law enforcement, and some of our state and local representatives two weeks ago today. Presented at that meeting were Target, East Liberty and downtown stores, and corporate. Target had 10 corporate representatives there. 10. That's how imperative this is to them. 10 security officials from corporate. Whole Foods presented, Shop &amp; Save in Lawrenceville, and a small retailer called Trim Pittsburgh, who's also located in Lawrenceville. Disturbing videos were shown depicting 50 to 70 juveniles, multiple occasions of 50 to 70 juveniles congregating, blocking entrances to stores, fighting, carjacking, attacking customers, setting the store on fire, among other things. I have that video with me tonight. If any of the council members want to see this after the meeting. The overreaching theme from each retailer and law enforcement officer who spoke, including Chief Barone, Officer Rodriguez from the Sheriff's Office, Chief Campbell from the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police, or from the Allegheny County Chiefs of Police. The overreaching was a cry for help from our politicians and our leaders. It was really compelling. Employees are so traumatized by the violence, that Target has brought in outside professionals to provide counseling services. That's crazy. They also brought in security personnel who specialize in training for urban gang-related violence and threats. These national retailers are critical to the well-being of our business districts. They won't tolerate the liability that they're experiencing right now for any extended period of time. They will close at-risk stores, much like Whole Foods recently did in San Francisco because of violence. We need a two-pronged approach. A short-term solution to get beds open and available now for these juvenile offenders, and a long-term solution for a new facility with a new name, new programming, including trades, training, other assets. Clearly, we need something better than what we had, but it's going to take time and money. Right now, we need to get Schuman open to get this under control. These teens should not be in the adult population. I ran out of time, but we could go on. We have over $500 million spent in East Liberty and development over the last 15 years. Another $100 million in the pipeline. It would take a couple million dollars to get that Schuman Center open, if that. And we have the developers on hand that can get it open like that, if given the funds and the leeway.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really... I implore you guys to really look at this closely, and thank you so much. And thank you to our law enforcement officers who deal with this stuff every day.
Next.
The only one remaining is the non-timely sign-up, and I do not have his name on the sheet. Philip, apparently.
Does anyone object? Go ahead.
Thank you for having me. I'm Pastor Philip Battle. I'm the founder of the Western Pennsylvania Diaper Bank. I'm sure you guys remember me now. I usually have a suit on. I am also the founder of Keystone Career Navigators, and I am the homeless resource specialist for communities and school, which I'm sure you've all heard of, or you should have heard of. We're a contractor for AIU. I'm here today to advocate for the homeless population, primarily the families that have children in school from K through 12. And I must note to the gentlemen that it's also difficult for the parents to get to those prisons that you suggested outside of state and other places that you did not mention. Nor did you mention the families that are affected by the perpetrators of that. So we're talking about children, which I am an advocate for, and I don't want you to forget that that was ever said. Now, what the problem is, you've got all this money, and I could give you a list of it, but it'd take up too much time. I know you got $23 million here. The city got 2.5 there for homelessness in '22. And I could tell you, I could add it up and tell you how much money you had, but you know already. And I think you're finding out that McKinney-Vento is not really working, is not as having the impact that it should. Now, what McKinney-Vento is, if you become homeless in Claritin and displaced in Moon, you get a cab to school from Moon. So that means that child has to get up before 4:00 to get a taxi, and his mom has to go with him, blah, blah. So I got a minute. So what we need to do is think of what I suggest that we do is reallocate some of the funding to include shelters for families with children in school in every school district. I know that's a big call, but they're doing it in Houston, they're doing it in Los Angeles, and other cities around the nation. One in 17 families that have children in school in this nation experience homelessness. There's more than 17 people in this room, I believe, so one of us is homeless. And those landlords that... If you look, their landlords or landowners are now charging a security deposit in addition to first and last month's rent. And a family, a single mother with multiple children, four, five, six children, the rent is about $5,000. And I got four, three seconds, and I'm done, but if you have $5,000, put it on table. I'm a pastor. I'll make the collection now.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Have a nice evening.